You don't have to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We're here tonight for the Fire Chief's annual evaluation. It's a one-item agenda. We will be conducting tonight's review as we have all prior reviews in the past. We will go through each category and ask each member of the board for comments and comments from the Fire Chief. There will not be an opportunity for a public comment this evening. We welcome the public's attendance and remind everyone to please be respectful while participants are speaking and not engage in any side conversations so that everyone can hear and so that those at home are able to understand what's happening. At this point, we're going to begin the review. Chief, I just asked that you go to the podium. That way, those at home can hear what's happening. I will say that I watched the other night's meeting, as an aside, and those that were speaking in the audience, you absolutely cannot hear anything that's going on. So, I'll be more judgmental about that. So, as we have in the past, we will start with the first area of the evaluation, which is job performance. Under job performance, it says, "Performs responsibility as appropriate for the position. Work performance results in consistently high quality and quantity of professional work." Shannon Cutler's not with us this evening, but she did leave a copy of her evaluation, which I will read into the record so that everyone is aware. Shannon rated this area a three and said that the chief performs very well, especially with all the obstacle he has had to overcome. Jackie, do you care to comment?
Chief Workman's common sense and thought-provoking... Thank you. I'll start again. First of all, good evening. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay, regarding job performance, Chief Workman's common sense and thought-provoking leadership has inspired his employees to work together as a cohesive team, providing a valuable service to the town of Southampton.
Gentlemen, do you want me to start or do you want to start? Chief, I rated this area a two. I wrote that based on the job description, the basic responsibilities of the job are met. The job of Fire Chief, however, in Southampton involves much more than just fighting fires, completing inspections, and leading fire trainings. The ambulance service is more than 50 percent of the job, and the chief lacks the knowledge and experience it takes to execute those basic job responsibilities associated with running an ambulance service. My recommendation was that the job description be reevaluated and rewritten to involve more of the responsibilities of an ambulance service and not just a fire department.
I rated it a two also. I put, "The past year has shown much discord between the chief and members of his department. Lack of management experience in general and knowledge in the ambulance protocols specifically have caused these issues. Overall job performance has not been up to expectations due to issues with staff."
Shannon?
I rated it as three. Chief demonstrates a good general knowledge. He is working in a transitional situation, causing him to react and to require self-education on issues.
Chief, did you want to respond or would you like us to just keep going?
You know, it's a challenging... There's a history of challenge in the town and the department. I feel like I've faced it and come through it, and I believe, in my opinion, we're moving forward and doing a good job.
Very good. The next section is job knowledge. "Demonstrates a clear understanding of job responsibilities, has the necessary skills and knowledge required for the position, has a clear understanding of procedural and departmental requirements, ability to perform a wide variety of job-related tasks, keeps current with new requirements of the professional position and with developments in the relevant field." Shannon rated this a three. She stated that the chief is highly qualified and has all the qualifications that are expected at the time of hiring. Jackie?
Okay, regarding job knowledge. "Through his years of service in the firefighting field, he has fostered a dynamic understanding of the emergency and medical responsibilities needed to lead his department. He has been active in attending professional development courses, including the Massachusetts Fire Chiefs Development Seminar, the Fire Academy, and the Tabletop Emergency Action Drills. The drills were encouraging utilizing participation from all state agencies to ensure introopability, reactment for fire safety."
Thanks. I rated this section a two. "The chief lacks the ability to perform all tasks that are required of a Fire Chief in Southampton. Although he excels in aspects of a full fire department and all things fire-related, he's lacking the job knowledge and skills needed to be an active and responsive member of a department that is mainly responsible for ambulance calls. Although recent events with the department may have led to a better understanding of how an ambulance service is supposed to run, it remains to be seen whether he's capable of doing the tasks he assigns and expects of others himself."
I rated an overall two myself. I put, "It's clear with all of the issues that have surfaced within the department, primarily in the ambulance area. The Chief Workman needs to become much more familiar with the EMS protocols. The lack of appropriate scheduling in response to calls from his staff is unacceptable and potentially dangerous to our residents. As Chief, it is his responsibility to be knowledgeable in all aspects of the department and ensure that his staff is doing what they are assigned."
I rated it as a two. "Chief appears to be self-educating in the areas of the ambulance service. He is in the process of establishing procedures and expectations of his employees. He does appear to be establishing himself as a department head."
Excellent. The third area is personnel management.
If I could just speak to that?
Yep, please do.
Yeah, appreciate that opportunity. Yeah, I mean, this is... Southampton operates as a unique situation. I mean, there's only probably five departments in Massachusetts that operate as a part-time with a full ALS service. A part-time group, you know, people that work occasionally. As the town has reestablished itself in doing that, and that was the focus when I was brought in to make it an ALS department. There have been some growing pains moving forward, but I believe I've met those challenges of that. And I just feel as though it is moving forward, and it's in good shape. And the guys are a cohesive group. There was a little bit of dispute among a few of the gentlemen, and that's just part of any family that has disputes.
Thank you. The next area is personnel management. "Effectively selects and hires employees for position vacancies, motivates staff for optimum performance, encourages staff development, delegates tasks appropriately, demonstrates professionalism, leadership, and authority with department personnel, responds promptly and effectively to conflicts between and among employees, to personnel problems of employees that affect work performance, and to other disciplinary issues, promotes respect, honesty, integrity, and fairness. To the extent possible, promotes a positive working environment within the department." Shannon rated this area a three and states the chief is doing a very good job of staffing the department. I'm glad to see the new staff is qualified as firefighters and EMTs. Jackie?
Okay, number three, personal management. "Chief Workman has efficiently delegated work by motivating his employees to work together. He has skillfully coordinated employee schedules, reassured employees during stressful calls. He has reached out to industry professionals and state officials to stay current on safety standards and regulations that affect the town."
Jackie, what rating did you give it?
I really don't feel comfortable rating people.
Okay.
I think my words speak how I feel.
I rated this area a two. I said that the Fire Chief is able to select and hire employees to fill vacancies following procedures set forth by town bylaws, is able to lead personnel through staff development, as shown most recently by staff becoming retrained in accordance with standards of OEMS and other relevant agencies in order to meet standards needed to operate an ambulance service in Southampton. In regards to conflicts between employees, some employees have felt comfortable going directly to the chief while others have not. It seems that the chief's role as a strong chief can often get in his way of effectively managing people in situations."
I gave it a rating of a two. I put, "The department is in poor shape to do to what I feel are several reasons. One, the chief being unfamiliar with proper protocols for the ambulance due to lack of appropriate management experience and skills in the area. And second is failure to follow up on issues before they become major. Recent incident of deficiencies with CDH over drug protocols, as an example. And third is inability to manage the staff so that there are adequate staffing levels on all shifts and communications are open."
I rated this as a one. Based on the past few months, the employees that were hired prior to the chief's appointment were not motivated by the current chief in all areas.
Chief?
Yeah, that's a... Keep moving. I mean, I just...
Sure.
I think that if any of you really have concerns, you should come talk to me directly and certainly talk about any of the issues that you have after this. And I think that would be a good thing to have communication.
The next section we have is fiscal management. "Meets board of selectmen deadlines for submission of capital and operating budget information, including revisions, provides timely information to fiscal and finance committees as requested, manages department within the allotted budget, exceptions are only for truly unexpected events, demonstrates cost-saving measures, seeks sources of alternative funding, including grants, conducts periodic reviews of department fees, exercises proper revenue management, and pays bills on time." Shannon rated this area a three and says that the chief makes a good effort to be timely but can be understaffed, which makes it difficult, very resourceful with grant writing and budgeting. Jackie?
Okay, regarding fiscal management. "He has been instrumental in securing $24,000 through three grants, including the Public Safety Education Grant, a color code-red emergency notification system grant, and miscellaneous safety equipment grants that have purchased new fire hoses. Finally, yes, the new public safety grant has helped two girls to call 911 assuring the health of their mother. He has also budgeted for the yearly management of safety equipment to make sure it's compliant with national standards, ensuring that no future expenditures or safety violations will be incurred."
Thank you. I rated this area a two. I wrote that the department is run within budget to the best of the chief's ability. Ultimately, he came in approximately $5,000 under budget last year. Financial planning needs improvement. For example, my concern is that the cardiac monitor that we knew we would need to replace wasn't submitted to the capital improvement committee. Also, if we knew that we needed to return the cardiac monitor prior to May, then why did we wait until the middle of June to bring that to the finance committee and board of selectmen's attention? Also, I just have one concern about the third riders that we have now, and I'm wondering if you can kind of talk about how that's not going to affect our budget. So, it seems to me like if in the past, we've always had two people or whatever, and now we're adding third riders for training, which I think is excellent, is it going to affect your budget? And if not, how?
Do you want me to answer that now?
Yes, please.
Yeah, third riders are a good idea. It gets up-and-coming EMTs who are certified as EMTs to get ride time. So, a Southampton kid who is interested in getting into the fire service or ambulance service has an opportunity to do so through the fire department. In the past, the town has historically run three members on the ambulance service and two prior chiefs prior to myself, so I'd actually cut that back for cost-budgeting concerns. We're hiring these people at minimum wage, which is well under what we pay a working EMT. So, it is cost savings. It's good for the community. It's good for the kids in this town to have opportunity, and that's why it's there.
When you said your predecessors had three on there, which I agree with, one of the issues that came up then is that when three need to go on the ambulance, you've got to wait for three people to go to the fire station, get on the ambulance before the ambulance takes off. And we had questioned the prior chief, "Well, why can't somebody meet you there? Why do you have to wait for all three?" So, are you waiting for all three? Does that delay the ambulance dispatching to the scene?
Well, anything... Because we have, you know, our nighttime coverage is a challenge. You know, there's gaps in coverage that we tried to address through a second shift because there's just natural gaps, as always has been historically through the previous chiefs before me. And we pretty much leave it up to... An ambulance can't respond unless it has two working EMTs, and so that's the requirement. The third rider shouldn't slow down the operations as they're responding in the same timeframe as the other EMTs are. Generally, when a call goes out at night, there's intrinsic seven-minute delay, approximate seven-minute delay, as someone responds from house, getting dressed in the middle of the night, responding down to the station, and getting on an ambulance. Really, I think that, you know, that in itself, with our call volume, we're really on the cusp. My recommendation, of course, is that we work towards that second shift, that we have people at the station to cover... I mean, if we added a second shift, we would cover 83 percent of our calls historically, just as we've done those numbers, at a cost that's less than any comparative town such as Granby for actually more coverage. So, there is an intrinsic delay in nighttime response. There should not be any special delay for a third rider to participate. And I think the benefits to the community and the young people in this town looking to get into this profession overshadows any delay.
So, I guess my follow-up would be if the two people get there in seven minutes and the third's not there, how long would they wait?
If the two there are an EMT and the call is serious in nature, they would make the decision to move forward because the ultimate is patient care.
Right. That's what I'm thinking. My turn? Fiscal management, I gave it a three, which is an acceptable. I think you manage your budget in a reasonable manner. You try to follow established protocols. Been some blips here and there, but I think, you know, with everything else going on, I'm fine with it.
I gave it a four. Chief is able to keep his costs within his budget.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, you know, prior to me, there was no line items for anything. You know, when I came into the department, it was just... There was no clear direction by any prior chiefs as to how to spend. So, I've really, you know, taken the time to make a lot of databases to follow how we spend, where we can have cost savings. I've reassessed much of the department, saved a lot of money in just in how we allocate our personnel. And I believe I do certainly well in that area.
Thank you. The next area is time management. "Manages department schedules so that work is completed on time, considers employees' abilities to meet deadlines and grasp the daily tasks, prioritizes duties in a manner consistent with organizational objectives and/or emergencies, demonstrates professional management of personal work schedule, keeps department staff informed of scheduling issues, and attends department head meetings." Shannon gave this area a three and wrote that the chief has taken on additional duties that should be delegated and needs an office assistant. Jackie?
Regarding time management, oops. Pardon me. Regarding time management, Chief Workman has suitably managed thirty part-time employees to cover required shifts through turmoil and unrest. He has also encouraged and improved employees' firefighting, safety skills, and medical response training.
I gave this area a two. Dependence on others to complete payroll has led to payroll not being submitted on time more than once, and there's a lack of regular attendance at department head meetings.
I gave it a two also. I put, "Schedules have been left without adequate coverage, and mutual aid has had to cover in many instances." And I put, "It ties in with issues of communication and teamwork described elsewhere in the review."
I gave it a three. Once the board of selectmen... Chief has had difficulties in time allotted for ambulance and fire coverage. Submittable payroll presently is an issue. We understand it's because of limited staffing, but things need to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, payroll was an issue just recently, and certainly I do depend on the employees as much as anyone who runs a business would depend on their employees. I think that's part of running a business is using your employees to their best assets. I believe I do that in the department. It shouldn't be about the chief does everything, including, you know, washing bottles and scrubbing floors, although I certainly do that also, along with building maintenance. So, you know, I believe I cover this adequately.
The next area is communication. "Provides information to the public when requested in a courteous and professional manner, provides information to the public when department activities through the town's website and other media, communicates effectively with his or her own department staff, participates constructively in department head meetings, informs the board of selectmen about department issues as appropriate, provides written notification to the board of selectmen regarding planned absences and verbal notification of unplanned absences." Shannon gave this area a three and writes, "The chief is always in good communication. He responds to me in a timely fashion and keeps the board and public well-informed."
Okay, this is communication, right?
Mm-hmm.
"The chief interacts with employees, town officials, and public in a professional manner. He attends public safety meetings and has approved the radio communication systems among his employees."
I gave this area a one. I wrote, "Lack of attendance at department head meetings, lack of communication with the select board in regards to most matters. For example, with all the current issues surrounding the fire department, it's expected that the Fire Chief would approach the board of selectmen often with updates and status reports. It's irresponsible and unprofessional for the board of selectmen to have to hear updates and unmet deadlines from the media rather than from the chief himself. Specifically, getting a phone call at eight o'clock at night from the Gazette rather than knowing from the chief himself that we won't be meeting the deadline is frustrating. Also, when payroll's not going to be submitted on time, the chief should be proactive in letting the treasurer know instead of waiting for the treasurer to come looking for required paperwork. As well, there's a lack of communication in regards to when the Fire Chief is out on vacation or unplanned absences. And although I don't think that micromanaging time off is expected, it would be nice to know that you're on vacation."
I gave it a rating of a two. "It says, 'The past year has been very difficult in this area as far as communications with the public and the board goes. Communications with some staff is poor, as is evidenced by all the staff issues and complaints received by the board. The chief should be communicating with all staff on a regular basis and beware of all issues. If there isn't mutual respect, the communications fail and the department suffers, which is what has happened this past year.'" I also want to echo what Liz says. I've gotten several calls from the press saying, "Can you give us an update on what the chief said?" And I go, "No, let me get back to you." You know, I've stopped answering the call from the reporter because I've got his name in there because I don't want to talk to him and say I don't know because it makes us embarrassed.
Yeah, and if I may, I mean, I've extended to all of you individually. And just, you know, if you have questions, please call me. The press is often acting on stuff before it's out, just because so many of the people that have been making issue have gone to the press before anything else and trying to have the press catch us ideally. And there are, it's probably an embarrassing situation. I answer the press as best I can with the answers that I have at the time, even if they're not a completed process. It's been helpful since even the chair has not even called me really to have any conversations when there's been so much at hand that really needed to be discussed. Communication's a two-way street. I try my best to communicate. I appreciate that if you have questions that you would call me directly. I have a cell phone with me. I would answer your call 24 hours a day to give you information. I believe that you certainly need it and should have it timely. I think it was a measure that worked very effectively to appoint a liaison just because I think that, you know, you would have meetings here of the select board staff, and I wouldn't be informed of what the substance of those meetings were. So, I think that communication is twofold. I think it's a, you know, I think we all could use improvement on it. I certainly do my best. I've set up in my department, I've set up officer meetings. I've set up chief officer meetings, officer meetings, department meetings. It's an ongoing thing. Communication is much of management.
I guess I've got a couple of questions on it. I think Charlie's going to also say something on that. But if I saw something on TV on the 11 o'clock news, it's too late for me to call you and say what's going on. I should have known.
Not for me.
Well, what it means is that I don't know about it. It's already out in the news. So, when you know you're going in front of a camera and you just stood in front of a camera, it would be good if you text us and say, "Hey, by the way, this is going to be on there. We got our, you know, ALS back, and this is coming out in the paper."
Okay, at the point when I was interviewed, we did not have our ALS back.
But whatever you were saying on camera, it'd be nice if we...
So, if you'd like to know when I go in front of a camera, I'm more than happy to do that.
I think the point is that we're looking for department heads, whether it's you, the police chief, the highway department, whoever it is, to be forthcoming with information. I mean, you are a paid employee of the town. We are elected officials, yes, but looking for our department heads, who really are the ones that operate and run this town, to come to us and say, "Here's what's going on. Here's what you need to know," not sitting back and waiting for us to call you, more you coming to us and telling us this is what's happening.
Okay.
A more proactive approach, I suppose.
If we're reactive to the media, then we're going to, you know, there's going to be issue. I was, you know, as the department has gone through many evolutions and there's been many challenges that we've been faced with, I've been both proactive and, you know, in keeping the liaison informed as best as possible. The press is always looking for a story. There's always the rumor mill that's abound out there. I can certainly, you know, if the issue is that you're seeing something on the news before there's been a decision made and the news is reporting on it, I can report to you when I give an interview. I don't particularly like to give interviews, but when they're beating down the doors, I believe that information is a good thing to put out there. And so, that's why I've offered information to the media when they've requested it. If there's improvements that could be made there, I'm more than happy to, you know, to offer more information to you folks. Before a decision is made, though, it's difficult for me to inform you that no decision is made, but the media is here to ask questions and is going to report on it. So, there's just challenges to that.
I mean, you just said communication is good with the press, but if it was me, I would say if you talk to the press, send an email or text to Charlie or to all of us saying, "Press was here. They're going to run a story. Not sure what, but we'll be looking out for it." So, when they call us, we'll say, "Yeah, I talked to the chief. Understood you saw him." But to see it in the paper, CNN TV, and up on the personnel side, and just now you said communication is good, come to you to discuss. But like Liz was saying, it's... We're elected. We're not here all day long. It's more for the department heads to come to us. And I know when I've been out there during this whole process, I don't know how many people have come to me and said, "We've got issues. Want to talk to you about the chief." And I got to say, I don't remember one of them on a positive side. It was all in the negative. So, people that are positive either aren't getting out there because they don't want to talk about it, but people are negative, they're coming out. So, it's nice to know about that, you know?
Yeah, and I've certainly had a lot of, you know, people in support who've come to me and told me the troubles that this town has had in history. It is challenging. You know, I certainly want to be helpful to the information that you're looking for. And, you know, I've worked to get it out. It's just, you know, my business is to provide, you know, service to the town and get an ambulance that's functioning. And if I'm, you know, dealing with that process and press stops over for five minutes and they've reached out to me, and then I continue that day, it's not always easy to get all the information that you would like in a timely fashion. I certainly try for that, and part of that is, you know, through the liaison. Is it always in a timely fashion? Not as timely as I'm sure would be convenient for you. Certainly work to improve that. But I do my best, and it's been some challenging times.
Can I just ask? Did the... I mean, I know that you and Charlie have a good relationship as the liaison and Fire Chief. Did Charlie know or did the liaison know that we weren't going to meet the August 1st deadline beforehand?
There were some vacation... You know, Charlie was on vacation. The August deadline was a self-imposed deadline by the Southampton Fire Department. It was not anything that the state gave us.
But it was one that you relayed to us that we were trying to meet. So, as a town, we would have liked to have known.
It was a date that I had put out there that I was trying to shoot for. The first fell on a weekend. People were not available. It was a matter of setting up meetings with OEMS, with their varied schedule, with CDH, with their varied schedule, and the press was reporting on it prior to finalization from the hospital. And so, I did report to Charlie within a long, although Charlie's pretty proactive about getting in touch with me as questions arise. And, you know, just doing our best as a town to react to the press and their striving for a story.
I mean, I got to say, when you say sometimes you don't have time, I mean, you're talking to the press, you walk away. It's a text message, you know, 15 seconds, "Hey, Charlie, the press there, boom, boom, boom." It's done. I mean...
Sure. If that's delayed, that'd be no problem.
I think that maybe this is a conversation that we should move to the goal area because if we're looking to better the communication between the Fire Chief and the board of selectmen, then perhaps one of the goals we should have is a measurable goal that says, you know, "Once a month, you come into the board of selectmen meetings and say, 'Here's what's happening.'" Or, "Once a month, we get an email that says, 'Here's what's happening.'" But at least then, it's a way for us as a board to say, "This is what we were lacking. This is what we're looking for, and now this is what you're giving us." So, there's a way for us to measure that communication is getting better. I mean, we could sit here and you could say that you're, you know, you communicate really great, really well with Charlie, but that doesn't mean you communicate really well with the rest of us. So, maybe this is something we need to move to the goal area to figure out a measurable way to see improvement in communication.
If the liaison doesn't work... If the liaison doesn't work out for us, I mean, then I can text each one of you. You know, I'm not sure how Charlie feels. I've certainly done my best to communicate with Charlie. My assumption was, and perhaps it's wrong, that he communicated to the board. It is, you know, communication is a challenge, especially as things are unfolding. I'm not sure, Charlie, I guess I kind of defer to you to, you know, I mean, is there a way for improvement? Do you need me to come and talk in front of the board to put, to let them know what's going on? Or is the liaison relationship work where you could do that for me? Or unless there's a, you know, something over and above that would need specific for me to address something specifically. I've always, you know, come in front whenever asked. I've always given information when I, when I can, when asked about it, certainly.
I don't know that it's, I mean, I'm not trying to put Charlie on the spot here. And I don't know that when we created the liaison position, it was to eliminate communication between the chief and the entire board. I think the purpose of the liaison was when specific questions come up, one on, you know, a question on a Tuesday, then it's, you know, we have Charlie that can say, "Okay, let's go ask the question to whatever the, to whatever department head we're talking about." But I don't think that it was to eliminate conversations between us and you. So in my own opinion, I don't think it's, I don't think it's sufficient for information to go from you to Charlie to us because that eliminates the whole relationship between you and I, or you and us.
But if it's a last-minute thing that needs to get communicated, I mean, and he's busy, I wouldn't mind it. I at least want to get some communication so I know. Why don't you answer?
I think it's kind of interesting. I'm like the third party and I didn't say anything. I just get the, everyone talk about me.
Like you're not here?
Yeah. It's like, you know, all right, communication. I rate it as three. Once the board established a direct liaison to the chief, this improved. The communication did improve. But the chief needs to keep the board of selectmen informed, especially if the press or major issues are developing. When we go back to August 1st, August 1st, I was in Canada. I was on vacation. I really wasn't paying attention to emails, texts, and everything else. One evening, I looked and I had a text from Channel 40 asking me about the ambulance stuff. Prior to that, I didn't know anything was going on because I had been gone for over a week. "Chief, you need to communicate to the board of selectmen. I don't mind being a liaison. We have a good rapport and all the rest of that, but the reality of it is, you can't and the board can't put this all on Charlie to make sure all these communications go back and forth. If I was going to put it on somebody, I'd put it on a town administrator because she also takes and connects with the board of selectmen. But I don't mind being liaison to police, highway, so on and so forth, but the reality is if I'm not in country, it's kind of tough to try to let everybody know what's going on. So, and I totally understand where they're coming from because I was even blindsided by Channel 40 texting me because I looked at that and went, "What on earth is going on now?"
I ask myself that quite often.
And I texted him back saying, "I'm in Canada."
Yep.
So you didn't communicate with him on that either? So that's what we're talking about, I think, in general.
Yeah.
The next area is teamwork. Promotes motivation, enthusiasm, and pride among personnel, town officials, and volunteers. Maintains open-mindedness toward the idea of others. Interacts well with employees and other department heads and works harmoniously with the general public. Assists other departments, resolves conflict effectively, maintains a good work attitude, and actively promotes the town's interest. Shannon rated this area a three and says that the chief works well with others and has a great attitude considering the obstacles he has endured. He always has the town's best interest in mind.
Okay, so I have teamwork, enthusiasm, and having an open-door policy give chief workmen, employees, an ample opportunity to prosper and advance as successful firefighters and medical responders. I do have to say about the communication, he has communicated with us via email in what he has been doing. And I've actually talked to him, reached out to him and asked him what he's doing. And he's always been open and generous with, you know, what he's doing. So, and regarding the communication with the media, when we were under, when he was under investigation for some allegations, he was not able to communicate because he had to be respectful of the investigation. So I think with what he's been able to communicate, he has tried to be careful and respectful of the board. So I don't believe that he has not done a good job in communicating.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how that was relevant to the press, so Jackie, be honest with you.
To the press?
Yeah, because we're saying the recent issues with the press and in the paper, we weren't informed of it before it hit the press and the paper.
Well, maybe he, what he was trying to communicate to the townspeople was trying to say that, you know, he is working really hard and maybe us not communicating at all was tough for people to understand that, you know, the firefighters are doing a good job. And I think he was trying to reassure the public.
And just if I may, I mean, we're talking the most recent press communication. I think there's been numerous press communications where information has been very free-flowing to Charlie, to the board, to the best of my ability. You know, I do have selectmen that do reach out to me and I do appreciate that. I do offer information, whatever, you know, whatever anything you need. So there, I mean, John, you've never called me and I would welcome a call from you.
Oh, we've done a couple of times because you've called me a couple of times.
When I called you, absolutely. And so, and I would be more than happy to make that, expand that. I'd be more than happy to, you know, send a text with media events. You know, it's, you know, I've sent out, you know, requests when we had, you know, a state senator and a state representative here to give awards to kids that came into the fire department and no selectmen showed up for young heroes. It's, you know, it's tough. And I think it kind of, you know, we all can work better. And I think that if I could, you know, do something more like send out texts to make that more inclusive, I'd be more than happy to do that. I think that, you know, if Charlie feels unduly burdened by, you know, the responsibility of passing it on, especially when he's out of country, that's certainly understandable to me. I, you know, did have some communication with him. The news cameras are just, it's just difficult. They're looking for stories. Who knows when they're going to call you? They may call you and leave messages on my phone, leave messages on your phone. In this last instance, you know, I did give a press release and you probably didn't hear about it, but most of the news interviews that have happened, there's been ongoing communication, the very least with the liaison. So I believe if that's what Jackie was speaking to, I do agree with that. Do I think this last one, you know, perhaps we could, you know, with Charlie especially being out, that I could have reached out to you more thoroughly? Absolutely. And I would be more than happy to.
But he was saying you didn't reach out to him either.
There was no conclusion yet. There was, the press reported before we actually had conclusion. I was waiting for conclusion to the issue before, and do I understand that if a press goes out, you want to know that there's going to be something and you're going to field questions? Absolutely. And I can understand that. And I apologize, I should have sent out a text to you all recognizing that Charlie was out.
I guess if there was no conclusion, I would have said, "I'm not talking to the press. If there's nothing to tell us, why tell them?"
Because the press is pretty insistent. And you know what? It's nice to have good news. It's nice to see that we got through the other side of all this ALS stuff and it was really just, you know, some problems in paperwork. There was no, you know, missing drugs or any of this stuff. And I had the press calling me saying, "Oh, I hear DEA agents are running around the fire station." There's many people informing the press of all different things. And do I report that to Charlie even? I may, actually. Probably Charlie's heard some of that stuff from me. Maybe not exact timeframe when it comes in. But, you know, they're taking a lot of misinformation and they're trying to make something of it. I'll do my best to keep you informed.
Yeah. I gotta say, if it's important enough for the press and the TV, it's important enough for us to hear.
If the DEA was running around the station, you would have known. That was a complete fallacy that people were just trying to come up with and trying to get the press.
That wasn't on the TV, was it?
It absolutely was not because it had no truth or bearing.
Right. Okay. So I didn't even know about that one.
Okay.
I guess I just want my own opinion to be clear. I'm not, I'm not happy with a text as a way of communication.
What would you like, Liz?
I would like you to come into our meetings once a month, chief, and give us an update.
You know, if there's a press conference, you don't have a meeting in a timely fashion, that's an unreasonable request.
I'm asking that you come in even quarterly to give us an update on the fire department. Had the issues of the fire department not come to light, perhaps we wouldn't be having this conversation. However, excuse me, I'm talking. However, I expect the same thing of the police chief and the highway department if I were to ask. And I don't think it's unreasonable to say on a quarterly basis, "Can you come into one of our meetings and give us an update?" I don't think that's unreasonable.
No. I mean, it would be good just, you know, you know, before the town, you know, when people come to talk, that situations that, you know, we spent $17,000 for no conclusion that really could be, have been handled with people sitting down together. I think it's important that we communicate and we sit down and talk. So if you would like me to come in every three months to give you an update, perhaps we could set that up. We could do, if there's any, no issues at all, perhaps we could state that, that there's no issues. And otherwise, I could come in if there's issues and give an update.
I think that sounds reasonable.
And just, I'm going to comment, I mean, because I don't want to go on all the negative side, but I think you're right. It's two-way communication. So, I mean, personally, I'm working 50 hours a week, so by the time I come by, you're gone. But I'm going to make more of an effort to call you during the day if I need to.
Good.
And do the same with me.
And you can call me at 11 o'clock at night. That's really not a problem.
But I gotta tell you, when I get home, it's, you know...
John, I don't mind. I work the 14-hour day.
Well, it's not something you, it's me.
I'm there at night at 3:00 in the morning. I'm available. So if you need something, please call me anytime.
I am taking that to heart, if you will, because I want to communicate more with you.
I appreciate that. And I will do my best to communicate back.
Okay, thanks.
We're on teamwork, if you want to.
You want me to start?
Go ahead.
Teamwork. I rated this as a three. The fire department has been going through major turmoil in the past few years. The chief has been working towards bringing teamwork together, but it is recognized that this will take time.
Okay. I gave it a two rating. I put three, a C3 and six above, which, you know, you can't see. But I said, "There's a lack of teamwork in the department. Part of the issue belongs to the chief since it is main task to ensure there is teamwork in the department." But I said, "There are also select staff that are not working in harmony with the chief, which makes it more difficult for him. There appears to be a lack of mutual respect in actions and communications between the chief and some of the staff. This needs to be corrected for the department to function cohesively." And I know you're working on some of that.
Absolutely. Yep.
I didn't get a chance to read my teamwork part, but it should be noted that the fire chief has been working very well with officials at school. And they wanted me to make sure that everyone knew that the fire chief is very positive. He's knowledgeable with the fire inspections and he's willing to work with the staff to meet the standards and regulations that need to be met at the, over at the elementary school. Everybody else?
Yeah, would yours or Shannon's?
Mine? The next area is problem solving. Anticipates and strives to prevent problems, overcomes obstacles, develops alternatives, and implements practical and effective solutions in a timely manner, responds to problems perceived by others, and encourages the participation of others when appropriate. Shannon rated this a three and says that the chief is always up against the wall and always working diligently to solve and will seek assistance, will seek assistance when necessary.
The chief has worked hard to listen and find solutions to problems within his department. He utilizes a comprehensive computer policy that circumvents future liability and schedules mishaps.
I gave this area a two. I don't have any comments about his problem-solving abilities at this time. I'm kind of waiting to see what happens with all the new things happening over there.
I gave it a two also. It's more on the response to problems perceived by others in that area. I put, it also relates to several of the other sections. I put, "Without the mutual respect and cooperation of his staff, the chief has little chance of overcoming obstacles and problem solving." So again, it's a staff-related issue and I know you have some challenges with some of the staff, so that's difficult. Sorry.
Problem solving. I rate it as two. The chief personnel issues and ambulance service issues indicate there was little focus on problem solving. It appears the chief's management skills are limited in these areas. He has been self-educating in these areas and it has been much improved in the past few months. But it's going to take time to work this all out.
Yeah. I mean, when I came in, I never professed to be strong in the EMS side of things. There was an EMS coordinator who had handled it for their prior chief, was handling it for me when he had stepped away. And he, and it was no, to have all the responsibility on one person for such an important part of the fire service was bad judgment on my part. As we have rebuilt and rebuilt some of the problems that we had in the fire service, we've got a new EMS coordinator. We've got more people involved in the process. There's more redundancies put into place. There's less the potential for a single-point failure, which is never a good management practice. And certainly my shortcoming to allow it to be set up that way.
Can we just start with that one? Or can we add this one?
No, we can just keep going. We're on creativity and initiative, right? Record of developing and implementing new ideas, new procedures, new programs, or solutions to problems. Willing to consider changes in policies, practices, and procedures. Assumes new and challenging assignments. Shannon rates this a three and says the chief is always trying to better his department while searching for grants and new programs.
The chief has instituted resources to help save lives through writing and attaining grants to educate the public on safety issues and help secure properties.
I rated this area a two and state that the chief operates at a status quo caliber. Status quo.
I gave it a three. I put, "The chief has upgraded the basic level of ambulance services, which is a notable accomplishment. He has also shown that he's willing to implement new programs and procedures."
I rate it as a three. The chief has been reworking the entire department's policy practice and procedures. It's too early to establish any determination on this at this point.
The next area is above and beyond. Performs tasks that are outside the normal scope of work for the position. Makes substantial contributions to volunteer committees and task groups. Shannon rates this area a three. There are no comments. Jackie?
The chief also works with the public and his employees to offer safety and wellness programs at the firehouse on an annual basis.
I rated this area a two and state that the chief operates at a status quo caliber.
I gave it a rating of not applicable because I think with everything going on in your job, you don't have time to look at all these things.
Yeah, we really, and we've participated in, you know, in just events, helping people out, whether it's motorcycle clubs or horseback riding events. There are community events, you know, being part of Memorial Day Parade, just, you know, things like that that I think are important for the department, for the town. I do see potential for growth in this area. I think it would be helpful for the department and the town, for the fire department to expand. We are researching now to get like some CPR programs that we could offer to the public. I think that public education is an opportunity of which I haven't had the time to focus on, but I think would be advantageous. I think it's especially important for a small town to have education and fire department interaction just so that they can get a sense of what it is our firefighters do, the fact that we're not a full-time department, that there's only staff there during the day, nobody sleeps at the firehouse. I think those are all good opportunities and benefits both the department and the town.
I think they're good. I guess we're just looking at definitions. I think that is part of the normal fire chief.
Sure.
Yeah, but you are doing, I mean, right.
I rate it as a three. I've known him working on the Public Safety Building Committee. He's put a lot of time into that and effort into it. And I think he's done a good job in that role.
The last part is the individual goal. And so we ask members of the board and the chief to come up with a goal for the following year. Jackie, did you have a goal?
Chief Workman is actively working on getting the ambulance service back on track as well as rebuilding, updating, and properly maintaining all the equipment in the firehouse among many other... many other innovative plans to better run his department.
I put, "Continue to increase your ALS knowledge and the communications with the board," but I think we've gone a...
No choice.
Chief needs to continue self-education in the area of management of personnel and ambulance service, that goes without saying. He needs to have a working relationship with the town administrator on a day-to-day basis for the issues that develop. There needs to be better rapport between those two individuals. Being the liaison, I could watch myself getting bounced back and forth instead of, "Why don't you two just talk to each other? You don't need me in the middle of all this." I also want to say something else, just to make people understand the perception I have. I was elected in May, and I was asked to write an evaluation on the fire chief for August, which gave me basically 60 days of evaluation. That doesn't give me a big enough window to really draw firm conclusions on a lot of the topics.
Sit.
One of the, I have...
It's good for you, Jackie.
Two, one is the quarterly updates to the board of selectmen, and the second is, I'd like to see the fire chief move towards attaining a certification as a paramedic, so that he's able to operate in the same capacity that he requires of his employees at the fire station. So, I'm not entirely sure what is all involved in that, but I've said it more than once to more than one person, I don't think that you can effectively manage people if you can't do what you are expecting them to do. So, I would like to see the fire chief move towards that direction.
Yeah, I don't really see that as an alternative right now. It's an expensive program, a two-year commitment, and a dedication of time that if you want me to perform the functions as fire chief, I don't have the time for right now, I think it's an unrealistic expectation. I don't think it's unrealistic for a chief to have people who are good in certain areas perform and oversee those areas. I think that that is, you know, part of, you know, just any company that you go to, doesn't mean that the president of that company can fix the truck as well as the mechanic he hired to fix that truck.
Not as well, but he could do it.
I don't know.
I don't think that. I think at least what we're saying is, you've got to know what your staff is doing.
Absolutely.
Down to a lot of the detail, so, you'll know if they're doing it wrong.
Oh, yeah, I am an EMT, I am, you know, I participate on the ambulance. The, you know, the paramedics are professionals in the industry, they put in a lot of time, there's a lot of commitment of time required by them to maintain their certifications. I think it's a, you know, it's appropriate to have those paramedics doing the job and functioning the way they are. I think that, you know, I've been working in a management capacity to get more folks involved in the department, trying to get, you know, more folks from the community who are paramedics or can perform in that area. You know, if we're talking about, you know, needing more coverage with paramedics, I think, you know, that is something we can discuss. I don't think it's in the chief going out and, you know, doing all the calls. You know, it's not a one-person show. Fire department is a teamwork event, it involves everyone. And everyone, you know, performs their duties to their best abilities, and everyone has a strong side and weaknesses. And I think it's a matter of working with people's strengths that builds a team. The championship team is not one person doing every task, it's the quarterback knowing how to do his job, it's the fullback knowing how to do his job, it's, you know, the wide receiver doing his job, and everyone doing their job to the best of their abilities.
So, I'm wondering then, what steps are you going to take to ensure that you know that the new rules and regulations that are being set forth through all this stuff that's happening? How are you gonna know that the people who are doing that job are doing it right?
Because I helped to write them.
But you can't actually do some of it?
I cannot administer narcotics, if that's the question.
So, I guess my concern is that, I understand your point, and I'm not asking that you are able to be a one-man show, that's not my expectation at all. I think that in a large city like Springfield or Westfield or Holyoke, you're right, there are lots of people who do things, and there's people that oversee those people, but we're not in that situation. We're in a small town with a small department, and my expectation is that the fire chief is able to do all of those things. It doesn't mean you do them every day, it just means you're capable and able to do them.
Okay, if you look through the, you know, Massachusetts as a benchmark, that's not typical in Massachusetts.
Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any other comments from the fire chief?
No, I appreciate your opportunity to speak with you all, and welcome any communication that you would, you call, like you say, call me anytime, more than happy to give you whatever information I have, try and answer any of your questions, and you're welcome to come by the office and pull up a chair and enjoy the office and explore whatever we're doing in the fire department.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, chief, for coming in. That concludes our evaluation of the fire chief. There's nothing else on our agenda tonight, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[inaudible]